I'd like to call, okay, can someone be, Bill Dewey, our current guard there? And hold the flag. By next month, we'll have our other amendments, so I paid for it, so I'll nicely frame the net. Okay, our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. All right. All right, everybody, welcome to the September meeting of the Casco Township. All right, okay. The first thing we have is citizens' comments. Does anyone would like to discuss anything that's not on the agenda? You'll have another time later on, if you'd like. Okay, Bill? All right, first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda has the general for the September meeting, the regular meetings for August, the minutes for regular meeting, the financial bill, and payment bills. I have two additions to the agenda. I have J is Wayne Bumgarden resignation as Cemetery Sexton, and K dumpster rental for park cleanup.
With those two additions, I make a motion that the consent agenda be approved.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion and support to approve the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we'll call, I'm sorry.
I just closed, but Dan, yes, I think I'm after Jennifer.
Kessenski, yes.
Okay, Stevens, yes. Okay, okay. For motion, see affirmative. It's carried. Okay, correspond, first one, we have Bill Dewey from the State of Michigan Orphan Well Operations. Gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Dewey. I am a geologist with the Oil, Gas, and Minerals Division of Eagle. This is my colleague and partner in crime, Keith Kidder, and Keith will be talking in just a moment here. We also have another colleague, Amy Rivest, who will be down here at Casco Township helping us out starting this fall. The reason that we are here is because we've got, as you all know, a lot of old oil and gas wells that are in the Boyd and Peters Field. We call it the Northeastern Energy Field. And years ago, Northeastern Energy Corporation went out of business, went bankrupt. It took a while to get things rolling through the court system, but once that did, about four years ago, we were, all of the wells here in the Northeastern Field, not all of them, there's still some active wells, were reverted back to the state. And once that happened, they go on to our orphan well list. And Keith and Amy and I work in the orphan well section for oil and gas. We have had for quite a few years an orphan well program. Our oil and gas companies that are active here in Michigan, they pay a certain fee, or actually a tax, it's a severance tax, 2%, that goes into a pot, and that's money that the state has been using, state funds, to clean up orphan wells. But when you have about a million dollars a year, that's limited to maybe six or seven or 10 wells that you can plug. So we've been doing that, as a matter of fact, we've plugged wells out here in the Northeastern Field using those state funds. And as a matter of fact, not far from here, we've plugged several wells in just the last couple of years. Well, this summer, with the bipartisan infrastructure bill that was passed, we applied for a grant from the federal government, and we were awarded that grant just recently. So, that's a substantially higher amount of money than the 1 million that we have for state. It's going to be around, you know, 25 million, and that has to go for the whole state. Now, we have close to 500 orphan wells right now in the state. That's a pretty big number that we have sitting out there. That doesn't include some of our facilities that we need to take care of also. Northeastern Energy, we've got, what, about 60, 70 rounds?
Yeah, roughly, yeah, 60-ish.
60 wells out here. So, it's a lot of wells to do all at one time, so what we decided, we would break that up into a couple different phases, and I think it's going to be like three phases for plugging these Northeastern Energy wells. In the first phase, what we did, Keith and Amy and I came out here and we inspected every well and facility. Anything that was leaking some gas, you know, with some detectors, or if there was oil leaking out of the ground, those got higher priority. And just so happened that Section 22 of Casco Township had the highest density of leaking oil and gas wells and tanks and stuff like that. So what we did is we took Section 22, because we do have a lot of wells and facilities in that section, and we added a few more outside that were leaking, like the Ringelwell down there by Marine City Highway, Frank Schistler's wells in Section 27, and then Blazek.
There's a carolac in there?
Carolac's in there, Blazek. So there's a handful, though, that are not in Section 22, that are with this initial project. So, that's why we're here, because of the orphan well and the federal money. Now, I'll just let Keith kind of tell you what happens when we kind of roll onto site here.
Yeah, so actually, this coming Wednesday, we will be conducting our first pre-bid project kickoff for this initial Northeastern Energy well-plugging project. So we hope that all 10 of our pre-qualified well-plugging contractors show up, and we will take them to each location that needs to be plugged. We'll look at the wells, we'll look at the facilities, tank batteries, flow line infrastructure, things of that nature, things that the contractor's going to need to ascertain to have site access. Maybe road improvements need to be done on the old lease roads. Basically, for them to gather information so that they can put together a very competitive and hopefully, you know, not a cheap price, but a good price, that we can get a lot of wells plugged, a lot of facilities decommissioned, a lot of the flow line infrastructure cleaned up and pulled and removed and sites restored. So, that pre-bid meeting, it'll just be one day. We will be just basically escorting contractors site to site to site to site. And it's not open to the public, it's just our pre-qualified vendors, and they went through the process through the state of Michigan, so that should not cause any issues. But what will be, you know, you'll notice, is that when we're starting to, ready to plug wells, you know, you'll start to see lease roads being built or improved so that we can start mobilizing in equipment. You'll start to see some drill rigs. We hope to have maybe two going out here simultaneously when we're fully up and running, but certainly for, to start off, it'll just be one. So you will start to notice certainly in the area in Section 22, the presence of us out here. We will be working closely with landowners throughout this process just to make sure that, you know, they're good with things and that we're on the same page. Our goal, obviously, is to plug the well, remove tank batteries and infrastructure, and restore the site back to original condition. So, you know, it's going to take some time. You know, I think this initial project, we think it's going to take at least 225 days in the field. Could be longer, could be shorter, we don't know yet. But you will see a substantial amount of effort from us and our contractors out here in the coming months, looking to tackle this first project. So, we also have subsequent Northeastern Energy projects that probably another geology specialist, Amy or Bill, will staff, and that'll proceed just in the same manner. They'll just probably be, you know, more or less be in different parts of the field, plugging wells, working on facilities, pulling flow lines. So, we also will be coordinating closely with Consumers Energy. We know they're a major property owner out here. We have worked with Consumers Energy many times in the past, so we anticipate a good working relationship there. So, that's the main, you know, main components of what our project entails, and we just wanted to make you aware of our intent to move these projects forward in the coming months. So, and certainly, one thing we'll be cognizant of is with hunting season, it's something we take serious as well. You know, obviously, we will not be, you know, intruding on a property owner's hunting rights and whatnot, so we'll make sure that that's all worked out ahead of time. So, and certainly in November, when gun season starts, it's, you know, so we are well aware.
So you're working mainly in Sections 22 and some in 27? Will the township be given a contact number for you, for these residents?
Yes, I'll leave a stack of cards.
Yeah, when you're finished, we want to make sure that the ground is...
Yep, and at each well location, and at each well location, when we're done and we think we're done, we certainly will meet with the landowner every time. We're not done, done, until the landowner, you know, is happy. And sometimes the landowner wants the lease road left in place, and that's fine. We will do that, it's up to them, it's their property. We work with the landowner.
Right from the beginning.
Right from the beginning.
And we'll have them out there with, when our contractor pulls on the site, we'll have the landowner there, so we can hear their concerns. And then you say, "Well, please try and not do this, or stay away from the lab." Then that way, we're going to get their input right off the bat, as soon as they move in there.
And keep in mind, we'll minimize our footprint to the extent possible to get our work done. We do not want to tear things up. We're here to make things better. So, with that, it will require some heavy equipment to get our work done, and we will certainly do our best. So, our work schedule right now, just, it's going to be Monday through Friday, eight to 10 hours a day-ish. The only way we'd be working the weekend is if we got into a sticky situation where we just, we had to be there, had to, you know, sit on a well or whatever because something's going on with it. But we anticipate just a standard, you know, Monday through Friday work schedule.
When a well's plugged, there's no visible side that's totally...
No, it would be cut and capped four feet below grade. There will be numerous cement plugs put throughout the portion of the well board at critical intervals. So, you'll never know it's there in a couple of years, especially you guys have a lot of frag mighties around here. You'll never know.
And of course, those are listed on property deed, so, you know, future owners know.
We will have the location GPS for the landowner, we'll give them the GPS coordinates. We will also talk with the landowner, because some of them want a certain seed mix planted, deer and turkey, or, you know, whatever they want, we can order that seed and put on their form. We make sure that the vegetation is established, we just don't throw it down and walk away and say, "We're good." We have to, before we can sign off with their contractor, this stuff has to be growing thick and do, you know, really nice, so it beats everybody's satisfaction on that.
And we're definitely hoping to utilize for certainly some of the lease road access the clearing and grubbing that might be required, gravel or filter, local contractors. I know Bernie Teltow has some of that equipment and stuff, so we've used him in the past, worked out wonderful. We'll certainly be trying to utilize some local contractors.
That gives us a lot of confidence.
Yes.
There was a lot of wells, I remember just down here from the hall, Lindsey wrote, they had a little teeter totter well, you'd hear it, you know, putt putt putt.
Good, well, it sounds like you're going to do a bang-up job there. I appreciate it.
What is your intention, the steroids in November, roughly?
Well, you know, it just, we'll see. I mean, we're going to certainly, we'll have to reach out to some landowners and just see, because I'm a big hunter myself, and, you know, the equipment, it can be a little loud during normal working hours. We don't want to interrupt anyone's hunting, what have you. But we also are going to be very busy statewide, kind of also getting, you know, 90% of this $25 billion, we have to get contracted in 90 days, starting October 1st. So that's a lot of other projects that we have to conduct pre-bid meetings for and bring on contracts. So, you know, we're still waiting to see how that goes. I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse.
We're going to take the worst site first, if possible. We have enough wells that, let's say this landowner says, "Please wait until this day." We can build another one. We have 21 wells and 13 facilities. We have tons of work to do.
We have options.
We can move around and play musical chairs if we have to. So, I don't see that as being a problem. But once we start, we have so much work to do. We can't just shut down our whole operations for years. It's just not going to happen. Even though I want to bull hunt, I want to rifle hunt, it's just, it's not going to, we have to get work done somehow.
We will, like the week of November 15th, whenever that, for those few days, it will be shut down, for sure.
It would be dangerous.
I think we would definitely be on the drill rig type.
We can't guarantee you safety.
Like with those leases on all these wells. I got that well back here, you're familiar, it was in Section 23. I never, yeah, right. With the lease portion of it, I never got a release of the lease for that property. It's plugged. Is it going to cost me money to go to a lawyer to get that reverted off the record? You know, I'm talking originally.
We don't get involved at that leasing, at the lease level.
But I mean, if it's plugged, does it revert? I mean, if you plug the well, there's no well there no more.
But it could be re-entered by...
Right, right. I'm encouraging that they do back there. Kick off and do a horizontal or something.
Yeah. You still, whatever lease that you had in place, I mean, you have standing, I'm sure with the mineral rights, that has not changed.
Right, but what do I have to do to get Northeastern Energy, who was the last known lease operator? Because they sell them leases, was Orox and Sunoil originally drilled, Ranch Production, and Northeastern is the one that has it, I think, as we speak today.
When they went through bankruptcy court, I will have to double-check on this, but I believe that all the leases were terminated.
Reverted?
Terminated, yeah, they're just terminated. So somebody would have to come back to you and say, "They want these to earn."
And this brings up another interesting point. If any landowners out there wanted, for whatever reason, to acquire one of their...
I was going to ask one of them that question.
If you look on our State of Michigan Oil and Gas website, for us, we have a spot in the orphan well program. It gives you instructions on how to...
But there's liabilities by...
Absolutely. First, you have to acquire your mineral rights and prove that you have the mineral rights. You have to also post appropriate bond for that well. And that's usually the kicker, white people.
Right, but I'm saying, like, Bumgarden, Kaminsky, Cammer, Mills, the old Wolf's Rank, it's now plugged already. There's potential there, but it's going to take big bucks to, you know...
Exactly, but we encourage, we don't want to have a ton of orphan wells. If somebody wants to go...
Well, that Linky well is being produced as we speak now. Right, from St. Clair, I don't mention the name, but...
But yeah, no, it's definitely, people do that all the time. They will come back and get one of these orphan wells, they'll get it bonded, and then they'll start producing and...
Right, yeah. And if they go through that process, they're absolutely entitled to do so.
But you're targeting this phase, Northeastern Energy wells, like the Bumgarden, Rewalk, Bumgarden, you know, Kaminsky and Mills and...
There wants to be documented that either there could be leaking gas out of the stuffing box, they could have some, you know, slow active leaks maybe around the edge of the wellhead, or out of a heater-treater, or a tank battery, something like that. There was a reason. So we elevated them in priority to get plugged and/or cleaned up, decommissioned.
Yeah, like the, what is it, Ignatius Schmetusche? Is that, am I saying that correctly? Be right. That one, that one actually has got a lot of oil sitting in the secondary containment. So that one is, you know, even though it's contained in the secondary containment, we still, that is, puts it up higher because you have actual free oil sitting there. Same thing with the carolac, that has oil sitting in there, and then there's other ones like that.
Is that Oifield you're talking?
Yeah, that would be the Oifield, right, yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you guys, thank you for your time.
Relief cards here, okay.
All right, good luck just with the orphaning there. Okay, moving on. Casco Township, we're going to have, at the Beltwood Park there, we're going to have a ball cleaned up at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, October 1st. We're going to be further on down, renting a dumpster. I'll see if there'll be someone who could come out with a tractor, with a front-end loader to haul stuff.
Okay.
And...
Rusty will be there with whatever he has.
The young woman, Lauren Baroche, from Consumers Energy, who was here last month, since her colleagues want to, you know, do this as a part of a community project.
And Rusty wanted to know if before October the 1st, you would want him to go in with the, what do you call it?
Roshal?
X mark? And clear the path? We were out there last week, and he said, "I think I can get my X mark in here." Right down to the...
Further down, we'll be talking about issue that we'll...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, but it's going to be... Oh, you're just closing. All right, now, let's take care of it. So if anyone would like to come, it's open to all people. Usually, we do this up at St. Michael Cemetery, Department of Community, we do it twice a year. And usually, when we have a team volunteer, it's only two, three hours, and we're done. And we have a lot of junk down there, and so it's always a good thing. You know, I mean, Ms. Baroche was telling me about someone colleagues wanted to do a spring one. I said, "Well, that's pretty..." What?
This is a good time to go extra.
Yeah, absolutely.
But if you get some of those, the grasses and weeds chopped down, we can see what we're dealing with, you know, topography.
So it's always fun doing stuff like that.
I can bring that weed lacquer.
You bring your weed lacquer.
Okay, any questions, I guess?
I'll bring some water.
Yeah, we'll get a lot of... Okay, unfinished business, network computers. Recently, Mr. Raider, the owner, the provider of network computers, implied that he would be taking legal action. I'd like to get authorization from the board to make an offer, send them an offer so we could settle this matter and get this behind us.
What sort of an offer, how are you thinking?
Well, I was thinking maybe his initial offer, he asked.
I would suggest that we authorize Joe to make an offer and bring it back to the board if there's any reason that we should accept the offer and take it from there. So we don't put out a number that ends up being the number they choose. You know, we could do a high-low number, not more than number. But I think if we authorize Joe to negotiate a number, and then the board approves the number, it gives him a second hit if we don't like the number, that he comes back to us. We can say, you know, "We don't like it, we can say, 'I'm willing to do it, what else can we do about it?'" And then move the number down if we, you know, if that's the reasonable thing to do. If it's an acceptable number, it'll be done. Does that make sense?
Well, yes, for as much as I don't want to...
I know, none of us here want to do this. And I think we don't want to go to court, at least not at this point. We want to go through this process first.
Yeah, and I'd like to, if possible, please, I can do it this way, settle this and get this behind us.
Yes, I would like that.
I'll move that we authorize a supervisor to negotiate a settlement number of dollars to settle this issue with network computers, and that the number be brought to the board for approval, final approval.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to make, to allow the supervisor to give an authorization to engage with network computers and determine the amount for a settlement to be brought back to the board for approval or disapproval. Okay, any further questions?
I think this isn't, I think you can, this is not a part of the motion, but tell the computer that the board is not very, very warm for the idea of settlement. And that the township has deep pockets, if that's what it comes to.
Yeah, and...
Deep pockets to litigate.
Pay off.
Pay off, no, deep pockets to litigate. We don't want to do that, but that maybe the board might, maybe will, and you don't know, unless we tell them.
Our legal counsel, Chris Anderson, has been guiding me along in this. Now I relate what she said. Okay, all right, I guess we should do a real call vote on this. Just all in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, the next thing here is Casco Township other update, park update. We thought we'd got final approval for our first passport grant to construct the driveway in the parking lot and a pad for the picnic table and that. We haven't, I was talking with Pam Blodden, our park designer, and that hasn't happened. I don't know if there's something that, we have a new contact at the DNR, old one Lindsey, she moved to another section, and our new one, I've been trying, I had talked to her only a couple times to see, did I not hit the right button?
Yeah, she's been guiding us through this process.
Now I get a message after contacts, she has taken medical leave until the end of the year, probably returning to the United States. And so I got to get with someone else there, and she was saying, "By now, it should have came through, we could have had approval to start hiring contractors." So I want to find out. And our second one, to double the size of the parking lot and to build a picnic pavilion, a 36 by 44 picnic pavilion. There should be another stage where we could do adjustments. So I got to start wrapping on doors tomorrow via phone over in Lansing to say, "Hey, help me, help us, we need..." Yeah, I wish Lindsey was back, but Lindsey went too. They took that young woman to the trail section, because she was so effective. I get it, when you have a big person, they don't know. So, that's the update right now. Okay, the next thing is new business, Resolution 2022-15 Hazardous Mitigation Plan Renewal. Okay, we do this every so often. This is sent out, the St. Clair County Hazardous Mitigation Plan expired late 2020, and St. Clair County has received initial approval for an updated Hazardous Mitigation Plan from Pima, and has officially got the plan on August 18, 2022. The next step in the final approval process is for a local community to adopt the plan via resolution. The HS of EM office, and I request that your board or commission do so at the earliest possible convenient. So this is basically, if you looked over onto the thing, it says, "Our pledge to work with the county and other officials in case of hazardous issue happens." Take care of that. I guess we need to do this.
So I will motion that we pass Casco Township Resolution 2022-15, it's the adoption of the St. Clair County Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Support. Okay, we have a motion... Okay, we have a motion support to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash fifteen, the adoption of the St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there any other questions? If none, roll call both.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, four votes in affirmative, the motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, let's see what's. Uh, Jennifer, oh, can you sign that? Okay. Yep, Pedro, we have two, um, invoices here. The first invoice, invoice number zero-three-zero-five-two-two. This is for the phase-two application I talked about, that's to expand the power to double-size parking lot and build a picnic pavilion. So that is for three thousand and eighty dollars. The second one for the phase-one contract, construction drawings, um, that's for the first phase of the construction drawing, that once it's approved, we can get contractors bidding on it. So, and that's for our costs, for two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Okay, I need, uh, approval, a motion approval to pay these two invoices.
I'll summon to pay invoices, um, one and two, um, for, one for one thousand eight hundred dollars and the other for three thousand eighty dollars.
Okay. Um, second.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion support to approve the invoices from Pam Blau Incorporated, one for one thousand eight hundred dollars and the other one for three thousand eighty dollars. Okay, uh, any other questions?
No.
Roll call both.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, four votes in affirmative, motion carries. The next one is election source, this is the primary election support testing. This was, um, you have the company that come in here, they check over voting equipment before the election happens, um, Vicky and I were not here when they tested it. It was kind of fascinating how they tested the machine.
They did our, um, public, public testing too, for us, which was really cool.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was an interesting process, and, uh, of course, they don't do that for you, of course, State of Michigan doesn't pay for it. So, we have an invoice here for one thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars.
Well, I make a motion that we pay the one thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars for to the election source for the testing.
Support.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion support to pay the election source, um, um, in- invoice for the testing election permit for the August primary for one thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. Any other question? Roll call both.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, four votes in affirmative, motion carries. Next one, high-tech building department replacement, building department computer replacement. This is Katie's computer, that was a really crappy computer, so high-tech replaced it, so Katie, our illustrious junior building clerk, can be on the job.
Very good, I make a motion to, uh, approve the price for the building department computer in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Awesome, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go right ahead.
Yeah. Okay, we have motion, a support to pay high-tech, cost of eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars for replacement of the building department computers. Katie, any further questions? No questions, roll call both.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Let's see, it keeps Katie, and then Katie does a great job, I'll say. Okay, next one is Barjack Electric LLC. This is a bid to hook up our nice new electric sign, so we can advertise to the residents what information they should know, and to hook up our warning siren we're gonna have, okay? The sign we paid for through ARPA money that we, we applied for. The siren is also through ARPA money, from one of the county commissioners, each township got two. One of them here at the Hall, they put the other one down in Americana Estates, or the Credit Ferberina there, which makes sense, you have a large number of people there.
Yeah. It's better than putting it at the park where no one is.
Yeah, 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 that, that makes sense. So they're gonna come, they're gonna put a new post here, or, um, they're gonna take our light, mount it to it, and they'll put the, um, the siren on it. Well, Mr. Barjack gave me bids, where the sign is for two thousand three hundred and forty dollars, and the siren is for two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, for a total of forty-five hundred dollars. Um, he, um, Barjack Electric did the addition here, I know I've used them on my home project, they're very good electricians, and they're very prompt in their work, and, um, he said, let us know, and he'll be out here to hook it up.
Well then, I will ask, I will vote, um, to approve the bid for twenty-three forty for the two forty, two hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twenty volt, whatever, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the second bid for two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, um, for the, uh, the new siren. The first bid is for the new sign, the second bid is for the new siren, and I vote to approve both of them.
Okay, we have, okay, support, okay, we have a motion support to approve the contract from the bid, Barjack Electric, for forty-five, four thousand five hundred dollars to hook up the sign-up run and our new, um, warning siren. The warning siren, we try to get them to test it like at noon on Saturdays or Sundays, but no, they're gonna do it one o'clock on Monday afternoons.
Oh, that's just.
Yeah, I know, I, I told.
Three or four minutes, too?
Yeah.
I think we have to take lunch at one.
Yeah, I, Bob Courier from.
In St. Clair.
Mr. Bob Courier from St. Clair County Emergency Management is heading this up, and I told him, you're gonna be really popular with the staff here.
Yeah.
He says, oh, that's the.
Just don't want us, better get this out on. Yeah, so we don't scare the residents.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, okay, we have a motion support, okay. Um, roll call both.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
You know, they were saying that last one, about three weeks ago, when they had that, not tornado, but a sheer NATO, or shark NATO, or pipe NATO.
Yeah, they just named it like that.
Had that tore off the roof of the tower.
Yeah, yeah.
They were saying that a number of the sirens didn't go off, so they're investigating that, yeah.
Seventy mile an hour winds, and they didn't go off.
Yeah, they were wondering about the threshold, was that, you know, something was triggered, and so they're investigating that, because they're, I mean, this, we weren't the only one, all through.
Yeah.
It was a lot of damage.
Yeah, Southern St. Clair, Northern McCallum County.
I meant the siren went off.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, I was surprised, because I walked outside, I'm like, what's going on? I don't see anything, but it was all down the road, it's running.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Oh, dear.
Yeah, so hopefully they find out the issues and they get it corrected. Okay, the next item on our, is Nickel and Saft Volunteer Insurance Coverage for Park Cleanup Event. Actually, that's kind of misnumbered, because this policy here, I called up, um, Steve Saft, the more I work with this man, the more I value his experience and knowledge in insurance matters. I said, we have a park, we're gonna, I told him about the cleanup event. I said, we're also gonna have other events, and people would like to go back there and clean it up or do work, I says, I'd like us covered. People have, um, we're covered on a general liability, but additional coverage to, um, for injuries or accident death or dismemberment of that, um, we can get some additional coverage. Matter of fact, they say they highly encourage communities to do that. Um, the insurance we got here, the bid here is through Philadelphi Insurance Company, and it's, um, I put a synopsis for you on the last page. It gives the program highlights, accidental medical expense benefit maximum a hundred thousand dollars, introductory zero, benefit period is fifty-two weeks, accidental death benefits twenty-five thousand, accidental dismemberment benefit next one is fifty thousand, accidental paralysis benefit is fifty thousand, accidental death and dismemberment paralysis aggregate is five hundred thousand per accident. The premium's, okay, the annual rate is two ninety-one, two dollars and ninety-one cents per volunteer per year. So I put a breakdown, ten volunteers, twenty volunteers, thirty, forty, or fifty. So that's, it's, if you look, it's pretty nice, it's.
Yeah, it's pretty reasonable, isn't it?
And it'll give us another layer of protection, God forbid, if one of our volunteers gets it. I guess my question is, do, do you want this extra coverage, and if so, for how many volunteers you think it pays to offer?
I'd like to see the table get fifty volunteers, maybe thirty.
Yeah, okay, I think, yeah, thirty? You make a bad bid, um.
I'm thinking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty, sounds good. You make it a motion?
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay, make the motion.
I'm making the motion to get additional coverage for thirty volunteers at eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents a year.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to purchase volunteer exit insurance for thirty volunteers at eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents a year. Any further questions?
No. So that'll cover us for, like, if we have other cleanups or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, for a whole year.
Okay. Dan, we'll see how that goes and how many.
And if more than thirty people come, then we'll tell them to go home.
Yeah.
You go home.
We have a flock of two hundred people, so, uh, all right, um, okay, okay, so for, all right, if there's any questions, roll call both.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Yeah, and I, I think that's just a smart thing to do, and just to make sure, never doubt. Could save us a lot of trouble. All right, the next thing is MTA Regional Summit. They have fall summits, and they have one up in Port Huron here. This is October, was it twenty-sixth or twenty-sixth, or twenty-fourth and twenty-seventh? I highly encourage people to go, I think this would be great for Eugene and St. Clair County.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this would be a wonderful, um, it gives the different things, if you want to go one day's or two days, it gives, um, some of the conferences that are involved, they have financial fundamentals for township and insights, I need to tell Nelson some supervisor, legislative lowdown, broadband, showing them money, what townships need to know about grants and that. So it's a, MTA always puts on a great event, um, they have it in several different locations, but the one in Port Huron is October twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, at the New York Conference Center. That's right, there by the, um, town center. Yeah, by the bridge, beautiful site. And I would request the board that any member of the board that would like to attend at the township paid, um, the registration fees. So moved, okay. Do we have support for that?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion support for the township to, um, pay the reg, the entry fees for the MTA Regional Conference here in Port Huron on October twenty-sixth, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And these are all, I always, I've never been to a bad MTA event, I've always, I would really enjoy it. Okay, if there's any further questions? Okay, if done, roll call both.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Yeah, okay, motion, four, voting affirmative, motion carries. The next one is the St. Clair County Economic Development Annual Meeting. Um, if you would like to go, this is Mr. Dan Casey, who was here a few months ago, that's his group, Economic Development, um, Agency, what they do is they promote, um, economic development within St. Clair County. I mean, they do good stuff, they help out prospective, um, people investing on different things here in the, um, community, so they kind of are sort of like, um, advisors to them. And they do good work in that, um, so, but they have an annual meeting, if anybody would like to go, I would, I would like, you know, if they're interested, the township paid to go, they have that. I'm Rachel, I gotta check the calendar, I should go to show my face.
So who, where is this at?
This is.
Oh, over here.
Yeah.
Interesting, is it at the St. Clair Golf Course?
Port Huron Golf Course.
I'll port here on it.
You've never been there, it's a private. Okay, we have a motion, any support?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion support for the township to pay for anyone who would like to go to the MTA Regional Summit on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth. Okay, roll call both.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes. Said I'm not used to going first.
Okay. Okay, four motions in affirmative, um, motion carries.
I'm watching.
God bless you. Okay, the next one is Al Ensign, resignation as zoning board of appeal alternate. Al, he, a few weeks ago, he got a hold of me, he works an evening shift and a lot of work, he's unable to make it in a meeting, and he says that, he feels that he hadn't been here, and he needs to step down. So I said, we'll send a letter to the township and, uh.
I'm hoping we accept Al's resignation with appreciation for his service on the zoning board for a number of years, and, uh, congratulations for being healthy and well and able to work again, because he had a lot of problems, I mean, we shouldn't say that, but it's good to hear.
Yeah, I assume, he goes to the same churches I've been, I've been seeing him.
Trouble with his feet that we just, uh, made for the year.
Support.
Okay, we have, um, a motion support to accept the resignation of Al Ensign as zoning board of appeals alternate, um, any further discussion? I do, I had a couple people to me that are interested, so.
Okay.
And, uh, one of them was from Bill's era, one of Bill's neighbors, so.
Okay.
Myself, I like to now appoint people to the Z B A Plan Commission, I'd like to get a spread of people, um, around the township, especially the kind of lack from the southern part, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so, um, let's have a vote to accept the resignation of Al, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next one is Wayne, but Wayne is our constable, which is elected position. He was also our cemetery sexton. Well, Jennifer, Vicky went to the, um, cemetery, um, summit, was it your?
Conference, yeah, and classes.
And that's not allowed by law. You cannot be elected official of a community, a community and also be an employee. So, um, I called up Wayne, I said, what do you want? You want me constable or sexton? Pick one or two, you can't be both. He says he'd rather be constable, he resigns as cemetery sexton.
And he's out on the road again now.
What's that?
Is he on the road?
Yeah, he's getting, he's getting better, yeah.
So we, but we're getting coverage?
Um, the cemetery sexton, whoa, whoa, whoa.
No, no, I mean the, the constable, because he goes around, no?
No. We are not.
How do we do that? I mean, how do we cover that if he's unable to do that? I know he was, he'll, a while.
I've been talking to him about his duties, he's also the N E and C rapist, been to the last couple meetings. I will engage with him again, um.
I think the board needs to, you know, keep, keep that in mind and make sure these, uh, township needs to make sure that these things are getting covered.
The township needs to report to the state.
Yeah.
About what is being done, uh, with our enforcement.
Liquor, liquor.
And liquor, liquor fund, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? The visits that they're supposed to make.
Yeah.
Once a month, as far as I know, it has not been done in three months.
Yeah.
I've never seen paid the work done.
I, I.
That's not acceptable, and I'm not falling, waiting for that, if he's not able to get out there, that's not acceptable.
I can't.
I've discussed it with him, I says, Wayne, if you cannot do it, just step down so we can bring someone else.
We have to.
And, uh.
Because those are, you know, if, if, if there is a violation at any party store, at Perch Point, at any place where parties are held, and it is found that there has been no liquor inspections there for a number of months, that entity will be in trouble, and so will we. And we have to protect ourselves in that manner. So he has to, I appreciate and I accept his resignation, um, as. So he has to, I appreciate and I accept his resignation um as a cemetery sexton. But that does not bear the liability that the constable does.
Yeah, I will talk to him tomorrow.
All right.
And I will give him a thing because, I mean, we cannot, he's that's elected position.
Yes.
And um if we do, if there's a special um procedure we have to follow.
Yes.
I like the idea of having a constable. I think it's a-
Well, either we do it or it reverts to the state and we give up our liquor fund to the state.
How many licenses are there in Casco? More than you'd expect.
Oh, there's ten, is there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's based on population.
Well, you can only get so many liquor licenses. I don't know if there's any additionally available liquor licenses, but there's ten in the township as it is now.
So he has a number of visits that we're missing now.
Well, I guess, last time I talked to him, he says, yes, he's been doing it, but he hasn't-
Five months worth.
Yeah. So I will talk to him tomorrow, but we'll resolve this situation one way or another soon.
Nothing against Wayne personally, it's just it has to be done.
No, but the township signs a legal form at the beginning of the year uh or whatever the state requires, that we have a hired constable. And if we don't, then it reverts to the state. And sooner or later, they're going to want to see this paperwork that is now five months old.
If he resigns, you can appoint somebody, yeah.
Yes, that for sure.
Yes.
I don't want to go in, that's expensive.
Well, that's what's needed, I mean, it's all due respect. What has to do with the township needs to do.
Yes, sexton, did you talk to him about giving us all of our paperwork?
Yes, I, I, I did talk to him. I'll reengage with him. He says he only has copies. I'll tell him everything just right now.
If he has copies, we need everything.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so.
Do you know we need to put a time limit on that? Because we really do need that stuff.
I'll give him a week. I'll go down. I said I can even go down there and get it. And uh, and it's um yeah, it's, and even like the cemetery, that's important stuff when you deal with-
Yeah, yeah.
Grave.
Right, well, yeah, and you're dealing with, with professionals, you're dealing with Mr. Young, and you're dealing with
Right.
the agencies throughout Macomb and St. Clair County.
And also like a, a burial right, um, when you buy a grave, it's not a property, but it's still a legal deed to a parcel of life, I mean.
And, and that, all that paperwork and all of the money, uh, if there's money exchanged, should be receipted through the clerk's office.
That was one of the things we learned at the cemetery thing, that wasn't being done. That's actually, as township municipalities, we can't run like churches and stuff like that because we are governmental. Every penny that, anything that the cemetery class has to go through the township first and then we disperse that money off. He can't, the sexton can't collect that money. It all has to be done through this office. We have to have paper trails for everything and all that paperwork. And that's how, like the lady explained, she goes, and that's how obviously a lot of townships did it, were really long time, you know? And, but a lot of legislation's changed through the years and that's one of the things, and we have to have paper trails for everything, so.
We have um-
It protects everyone, yes.
We have someone, um, we have someone called up that needed a, a, a footing for a monument down there. They had an intern, interment recently. And there's a gentleman there we use at St. Michael's, Kerry Shalloworth. I called him up, I says, hey, would you, and he has already done some graves at here, some, or Castle Township Cemetery in here. And um, and he said, yeah, he'd be willing to do it for us. And to me, he would charge, depending on how size, then they charge the family.
Oh, see, yeah.
But that would, we would have to, we have to come up with prices, we would have to come up with everything and then-
And then disperse it to him.
Then it disperses it to him.
Yeah, I'll give you Kerry's number. He's really good, yeah.
So that's the thing, we have to come up with a price. Look, we need to start making ordinances. There's a lot of things that we need to start doing that haven't been done.
Sure, I agree, yeah.
But it's new adventures.
Yeah, in our, in our cemetery, um, has a sign, very nice sign. I was down there and Vicki called me up to go down there. We had to make sure that the right of way and I stayed down there so in case they couldn't hit any fine rusting spots or changing that.
Jennifer did find some ordinance as well, very old, old, old ones, so we do have something.
So, okay, so a vote to ex- um, accept Wayne's resignation as cemetery sexton, okay?
I so moved.
Okay, support. Okay, we have a motion support to accept Wayne's resignation as cemetery sexton, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll engage with Wayne tomorrow about his other duties. Okay, the last thing is dumpster rental. I went to MGM Dumpster, when we plant St. Michael's, we always use them. I got a twenty yard, a twenty yard is four feet high, twenty-two feet long, was it ten feet wide? You're gonna put a lot of stuff in there. And if we fill it up on the first of October, we could take a licking, um, empty it and bring it back and we could fill it up again.
Oh.
So um, so it's four hundred and twenty-five dollars a week, ten dollars a day per, a day over one week or fifty dollars per week. Three ton limit, forty-six dollars over a tenth. So, um, I mean, that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, you had to put big rocks in there to-
Rocks?
They weren't gonna do that. So, um, I guess I need approval. I'm asking for approval to get a dumpster. Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to rent a dumpster at MGM Dumpster Rental, right here in Ira Township on the interstate highway for four hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. Okay, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, our votes affirmed, motion carries. Okay, citizens comment. Al, do you want to say your part? How's your house going? Good. Have you finished them?
Nice to see you.
Is it filmed? It's meaning that you're about to hit the road or what? All right.
You know, Joe, I just had a thought. Perhaps we should get, uh, make sure that we have a, a burning permit for October the first.
Okay.
Oh, I hadn't thought about that, but it's a lot easier to burn than stubble than hard away.
Sure, sure. It's easy, I'd get burned for that. That'd be Richard Park Department. Yeah, Richard.
Richmond.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, we might, yeah, certainly enough.
I need to get one from my house.
Yeah, you go around mine. They admonished me when I went to the police station, they said, here you go in mine.
Oh, yeah, you don't want the, the, you don't want to pay two hundred, what is it, two hundred and fifty dollars for a fire call?
Yeah, two fifty.
Well, worse if it gets away from you.
Yeah, and worse if it gets away from you.
I have some, I have something. Anyone now have board comments? Does anybody want to bring up?
I put the, the burn permit on there.
Oh, just the, the Chinatown shit's fourth annual car show is Saturday, September the seventeenth from ten AM to four PM. Food, drinks, and fun. And winners receive a plaque.
All right.
So bring your car to be judged.
Okay.
Yax Park, which is at fifty-three hundred Indian Trail in Chinatown shit.
Okay.
Fun for everyone.
If you know, they've been doing a lot of work on roads lately, a lot of ditching been being done in township called replacements. The bridge on Palms Road is getting near done. They're just putting the side rails up. They put the, redid the asphalt approaches. I mean, talk about the infrastructure build. That's a prime example being made. So they're projected by the end of September, that will be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, Palms Road there. And then there, Palms Road, they have to replace a, um, a culvert right there at Palms and Puttycut on the Puttycut Drain. That'll probably after they open up the bridge, but that should only take a day or two. It shouldn't take long at all.
They're starting on DC Road right now.
Yeah.
Got the road closed between Puttycut and down, I don't know how far.
They got St. Clair Highway between Mildrum and um Church, right, done. Eventually we'll do between Church and DC and then DC and County Line. Although next year, we elected, okay, when we have road maintenance, we have our normal limestone haul. We have ditch mowing, we have the chloride haul. But there's always a match grant to get extra work done. This year was the, um, this, the redoing of St. Clair Highway. That was paid for, for money from ARPA Commissioner, ARPA money.
From Russian.
Russian, so we'll use that. Next year, we'll be doing, like we approved last meeting, a lot of ditching.
So that's gonna be next year.
Next year, yeah. I asked Bill Hazelton, Director of St. Clair County Road Commission, how come it's only fifty thousand dollars for ditching and more for other stuff? He says you could do a lot of ditching for fifty thousand dollars. I don't know, we'll, I'll, I'll engage with Mike. We'd like to do at least a couple of years of intense ditching. We have a lot of ditches. Um, my brother-in-law, who is on the road commission, he's one of the road commissioners, he said that he said years ago, we have a fund for ditching. Especially the, the southern town, um, townships like Castle, China, Cockville, Ira Clay. This is one big alluvial thing. It's flat as a pancake, not much relief, so it's hard to drain it.
Much easier to be just walk by.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I'm gonna start kicking around, getting with my fellow supervisors in the east. Maybe we could start pushing the county to do that. It'd be nice to get, when you get good drainage, just that, that's a world of difference. Sometimes it doesn't take much. So, um, I'll be working with Mr. Zoplets, our, um, he's the, um, the area foreman for road commission, great guy. Um, other than you, um, he probably knows the most people in the township. He knows everybody, especially what-
Yeah, so he is in an unhappy way because they complain to him about their ditching all the time. I don't get that.
The road's bad for my house, like what you're doing about it.
Yeah, no.
So.
I only get the fun people.
Okay, Consumers Energy are doing some upgrade on their facilities on Puttycut Road. You're gonna see work. What they're doing is some of their facilities are older equipment, they're just upgrading it, um, cleaning it up, putting fencing around. They've already did some work and it's really good, so. They warn us, you know, there could be some flares or some booming sound, but don't be-
Oh, good, that along with these-
Well, don't worry about it.
Peace and quiet into Casco Township.
So, and the last thing, Anita, we, um, as a bar, we express our condolences, like the boss said.
Your mother.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
An appreciation for your long friendly service.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, so.
Thank you.
So, and how, how, how's your, if I may ask, and your dad doing this?
My dad's doing okay. He, uh, he's out of the hospital. And, um, I saw him yesterday, he's doing pretty good, so.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I wasn't expecting that.
Yeah, we appreciate your effort, you've built for a lot of us, lost loved ones. And so, okay, is there any other questions?
No, I'm making motion to return.
Support?
Okay, here before we can, and support to return, all in favor?
Aye.
Just a little over an hour and the meeting with the best was a long meeting.
Wow.